President?
President.
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 I will have a moment of silence. I'll rise for a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to its great offices, which stands one nation, united in this liberty and justice for all. First floor of business tonight is public comment. Please be reminded, public comment will be limited to things that we have jurisdiction or control over. And also that is not further on in agenda. Everything else further on agenda, you will have an opportunity for public comment. But at this time, limited to things that are not on agenda. I mean for public comment. Any public comment?
In some of these instances, what type of zoning has been considered for some of these properties?
I'm sorry. Yeah, come to the podium and state your name and address. When you're done, sign in.
72 North Main Street. What type of zoning has been considered for some of these properties that are to be annexed and disused?
We'll get to that when, you know, when we get to a specific thing, Kenny.
Okay.
I can't remember exactly where you're at. You'll be able to comment on that and we'll be able to give you what the zoning is, whether it's grandparent or whatever.
Okay. And then some of these properties, it'll probably come at a later time of this meeting, but some other question I have is septic, that sort of thing.
Right, yeah.
So that'll come.
That will be addressed, yeah.
Okay, I'll address them.
Any other public comment? Do you know public comment? Move on to consent items now. Have a motion to approve consent items or any that would be called for discussion? Also calling for a motion.
I will be accept consent items A through the second.
Motion by Navy, second by Mr. Friedman, roll call please.
Chair Schwartz.
Four.
Mr. Freeman.
Four.
Mr. May.
Four. Schedule public comment tonight. Canceling that. I'm moving to the public hearing. I need to get all these in my. Resolution A, resolution number forty-nine eighty-three, resolution to the city of Livingston, Montana, annexing certain land which is wholly surrounded by the city of Livingston, is described as twenty-six Fleischman Creek Road. Mr. Currie.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this is the, will be the public hearing and the second reading of this is passed this evening. This will be the final action on this item. This is the property that is located next to the armory down on Fleischman Creek Road. You can see that little gray square right there that's completely surrounded. It's only one property that will be being brought into the city.
Thank you. Public hearing is now open on resolution forty-nine eighty-three. Any public comment? No public comment. Commission comments on resolution forty-nine eighty-three. Public hearing is now paused. Any comments? Got again a motion on resolution forty-nine eighty-three.
I have a motion to address resolution forty-nine eighty-three.
One second.
We have a motion by Freeman, the second by News, roll call please.
Chair Schwartz.
Four.
Mr. Freeman.
Four.
Mr. May.
Four.
Mr. May. Four.
That's down our agenda, resolution number forty-nine eighty-four. The resolution to the city of Livingston, Montana, of its intent to annex certain land which is wholly surrounded by the city of Livingston and is described as seventy-two North Eighth and seventy-two North Ninth Street. Public hearing is now open. Mr. Currie.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this is the property of the end of eighth and ninth street, most commonly referred to as Princess Trucking on the west side. So there you go, there's a little bit of gray and the middle is green. So that is the property question that will be brought into the seat and is on to a later date.
Thank you. This public hearing is now open. Any public comments on resolution forty-nine eighty-four?
A couple of questions that need to be addressed on this.
Kenny, get out and state your name and address.
72 North Main Street. A couple of questions that we're posing in this is, has the property been tax assessed? What is the easement onto the property for seventy-two North Eighth and seventy-two North Ninth Street? Those properties, the city never really put an easement in there to go onto the property. So we're questioning how that's going to take place.
Mr. Currie.
So as far as the easement goes, it doesn't change anything whether you're in the city or the county, it works the same way. If you want to set up an easement, we can certainly work to determine exactly what that easement is. It doesn't mean technically, I think on the corner there, there's some city property that needs to be crossed to get into more.
That's correct.
The properties there. So we would have to, we would work with you to set up that easement. For now, it works the same as it always has. We aren't changing anything as far as that's concerned.
What type of zoning has been considered for that property? Because there's two dwellings on it and there's also a business.
So as far as zoning goes, anything that's already there is grandfathered in so it can continue in its use until that use is changed or not used for a year. So whatever is currently there can stay there. Looking at the zoning map, this has not gone to the zoning commission yet and it won't until if and when it's annexed, then they'll look at it. But in that area, we most likely, since all the remaining surrounding properties are gray, we're probably looking back to the R three. That would be the most likely.
R three. And then one other question, the infrastructures. What about the water and sewer? Is there going to be environmental impact and things? Is the sewer going to attempt to be come out and hooked up to the city?
So as far as the sewer goes, the commission could require a hookup, but I don't think that's their plan right now, we're not discussing. But as long as the current septic's are in good shape, there'd be no problem continuing to use them until they fail, which point then you would be required to hook up to cities.
Would that be the same with the two wells, water wells that are on there?
So as far as the wells go, and now we're getting to water rights, I'm not stupid enough on that. But the only problem with, we can't dig new wells inside the city because you have a wellhead protection area that will include the city. But current functioning wells can continue to be used, although they can't be connected to the city water system. So if you did connect the city water, there'd have to be a valve or a break between the city water and the wells used. But if you continue to use wells, that's not an issue. There are many properties in the city that are currently on a well and have a city water.
So there'll be a later date when the property would be assessed for tax purposes?
Once it's brought into the city, then the county treasurer basically does that assessment. It's, as far as the taxes go, it's pretty standard. The only question, I think, for future years is how we're going to do street assessments. And that'll probably be addressed this winter.
And garbage would be the same way?
Yeah, you'd have to get garbage, but it would be one, one garbage container would be the requirement, which is.
For both dwellings?
I, I would have to see how, if we're splitting them up. If there's two addresses with two main, then it would be one garbage per, I think it's sixteen dollars.
Those are my questions.
My, I have one clear petition, three questions. The surrounding area is R two, not R three, so I would expect it to be R two.
So it would stay R two.
It would stay R two.
Most likely. But it'd have to go to the zoning commission, which is up to them to make a recommendation to the commission, who would then approve it.
And then would we have any say in that prior to approval?
Sure, you can attend both the zoning commission and the commission.
Okay, thank you.
Any other public comment on resolution forty-nine eighty-four? This hearing is now paused. Commissioners, any comments?
No comments, but thanks for those great questions. That leaves up in the hallway, so those are really good questions. But I haven't yet said additional comments. Thanks.
I agree. Further comments? Do I have a motion on resolution forty-nine eighty-four? I make the motion when passed, resolution forty-nine eighty-four. Second. I have a motion by Freeman, the second by Navy, roll call please.
Chair Schwartz.
Four.
Mr. Freeman.
Four.
Mr. May.
Four.
Mr. May.
Four. Next public hearing is resolution number forty-nine eighty-five, a resolution of the city of Livingston, Montana, annexing certain land which is wholly surrounded by the city of Livingston and is the property of Livingston School District on Student Trail and is described as lot one, subdivision one eighty-three, in section fourteen, township two south, range nine east. This public hearing is now open.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this property is again, you can see right there, the larger section surrounded by the green. That is the Livingston School District property. It's currently in the county, just north of the soccer fields. We will be bringing that into the city. No certificate changes for the school. And I believe the school board is here.
Thank you. Any public comment on resolution forty-nine eighty-five? Do you know public comment on forty-nine eighty-five, considering it's not fully? Can I ask you a few questions? Can you entertain a motion for resolution forty-nine eighty-four?
I move fast, resolution forty-nine eighty-five.
Second.
I have a motion by Navy, second by News, roll call please.
Chair Schwartz.
Four.
Mr. Freeman.
Four.
Mr. May.
Four.
Mr. May.
Four. Next resolution forty-nine eighty-six, resolution of the city of Livingston, Montana, annexing certain land which is wholly surrounded by the city of Livingston and is described as a property between Harbor Drive and Bennett Street bonded by Miles Lane, Chestnut Lane, the city transfer station in Yellowstone River in section seven and township two south, range ten east. Mr. Currie.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So like the other three, this is the second reading of this resolution, it would be from a fact that was passed tonight. This area, as you can see, goes to Bennett Street down there in the bottom, continues north along Gertinger Road up to Harbor Drive and then continues east to the river. Basically that's around the public works area there on the transfer station is. It will bring the city up to Harbor Drive, which is pretty much the midpoint of Green Acres and bring everything east of Green Acres and Workstone down to Bennett Street.
Thank you, Mr. Currie. This hearing, public hearing is now open on resolution forty-nine eighty-six. Now I ask for all the comment. State your name and address.
Good evening, Commissioner, Leslie Feigold, ladies and gentlemen, Chamber Commerce CEO. And I'm here tonight to talk with you. And this is a very serious matter. And the serious matter is that the people that are behind me, you're going to hear from them tonight. There are a few things. First of all, they received a letter that was annotated code used originally, annexation of contiguous land, forty-three oh one, seventy-four three oh one originally. Tonight, you'll see that you have where a section seven two forty-five oh one was utilized to do this resolution. So again, that was changed. This land that we're speaking about tonight is not wholly surrounded. And this land utilized by forty-five oh one saying that the Yellowstone River is part of the boundary, well, after talking to the DNRC, that is incorrect. The Yellowstone River is owned by the state of Montana, that is public. And the DeRosa's land goes all the way up to the public river line. So that's number one. Number two, these people out here have animals. They have livestock. And in the city of Livingston, you cannot have livestock, you cannot have fowl. I can't imagine, being that I'm going to be in the donut, somebody telling me that I have to remove my horses or after my last horse dies, I can't have any more horses on the land that I own. I want you to imagine that. We have sheep owners, we have from ducks to sheeps to horses to cows. So think about that as well. Also, if you look under Montana code amintated, under title seven two forty-three twelve, under this resolution, in the second, very first sentence, and I please if you could, it is in the best interest of the city or town and the inhabitants of any contiguous platted tracks or parcels of land. I don't see how everybody in this area wrote you a petition stating, this is not in their best interest. This is not what they desire. And you is the commission to have a chance to stop this. Why is the Chamber of Commerce up here speaking to you? These folks right here are business owners. Some of the people that were in the five acre, green acres, business owners, we are going to lose them. They sell their property and move elsewhere and lose businesses. And you can, you need to think about that. When we start chasing people out of land, that they want to have a particular lifestyle, they choose to be close enough to the city, but get far enough away. It's beautiful out there. And if y'all haven't driven out there, please take the time before you make a decision tonight and delay to this vote. It's gorgeous. It's country living, close enough to the city where you could retire, get to the hospital, or go to the grocery store. But, you know, we can't afford to lose these folks. And, you know, we also don't want to make a bunch of residents extremely unhappy. That's not what Livingston is. Livingston is rural living at its finest, in whether you're in the town or outside of the city limit. And if you could just please take a moment to really think about that before passing motions or votes and put this over and talk with these folks. Talk with the folks that live out there. Or people in the county that really do not want to be a part of the city annexation, the higher fees, right? So I mean, please, if you could just think about the words that I said to you tonight and just give these folks some due time here, you're going to hear from a lot of people. And thank you very much, Commissioner, for your time tonight.
Thank you, Leslie. Yeah, we'll answer those two main questions just for clarity.
So just so everyone knows, there's no ordinance against livestock in the city. You can have any livestock in the city. There are currently horses in the city, I'm pretty sure there's some goats in the city. You do have to get a permit from the sanitarians. Basically, all that is, is saying that you have enough square footage for the animals that you have. The similar requirement in the city. Definitely chickens in the city. You can't have more than five chickens in the city and you can't have any roosters, but those are the only limitations on livestock in the city. So you can have horses in the city, not a problem, as long as you have the space for it. You've got cattle in the city, you can have goats.
It says in the ordinance, is there even a change in the ordinance?
No, the ordinance don't say that. That's not what the ordinance say. They say you have to get a.
Livestock.
Yep.
That's what they are.
Except for livestock, except for those things. Yeah. So you can fill, as long as you get the permit from the sanitarians, you can still live. And that's how we.
How much is it?
I don't think they charge for that. But I don't know for sure, that's a counter function. So, but we have non-restrict that type of livestock in the city. So there are horses in the city. I'll accordingly talk to the, well, you can talk to the river to the. The code in the letter.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. So. So as far as the coded letter goes, the letters are sent out, as you notice, Leslie is absolutely correct. The forty-five code or the forty-three code that's in the letter is not the forty-five, seven two forty-five that is, is in annexation resolutions or the code that we're relying on for that. I'm super pleased that the notice worked and they're all here and we've had a lot of opportunity to answer questions for people in the weeks since the start of the Neiman Report. This has not come as surprise to a lot of people. I've had conversations over the past couple of years with folks in that area who knew that this was probably something that was going to happen as a result of Workstone and Green Acres. So as to the river, there is a code that's in both seven two forty-five and seven two forty-three that says, even though such tracks or parcels of land may be separated from such city or town by a street or other roadway, irrigation ditch, drainage ditch, stream, river, or if the first side is narrow, too narrow, too small to be platted, it still is deemed contiguous to such city or town. And that would be in this case, seven two forty-five. But not forty-four oh one or forty-four oh three or forty-three oh one. I mean, there's three different codes starting from nineteen oh five to nineteen fifty-seven. So I mean, are we just picking one contiguous code or wholly surrounded code? It's still the river is the river and it's owned by the state. So, thank you.
Jalen Jardy, three oh six Grandview Boulevard. Thanks for being here tonight. And I'm the one that turned in the petition and helped in getting all those signatures and everything. Like Leslie said, the resolution states that they're using seven two four five oh one, but the letters that we got are, you know, all of us property owners, states in there, the city will use the annexation of contiguous land. Well, under the contiguous land, MCA, it says if it's less than three hundred parcels, if the landowners do not want the annexation, then it shouldn't be passed and then it can't be something for another year. It would affect a lot of my neighbors, myself, like what happened with Green Acres. A lot of them couldn't afford to put in septic's. They couldn't afford all the tax hikes and everything else. Some of them, it doubled and tripled. I have some elderly neighbors that I take care of, I plow the road. And the other thing with the road, if you want to use the road, it's wholly surrounded. In that resolution, which I believe was four nine sixty-one, where does it, what statutes supports being able to annex private road? Or is, you guys can annex private roads or? Hefflerland Avenue, Grandview Boulevard, McCaw, Frank and Alsbaugh were all private roads.
Yeah, it's on Frank's property.
They're not county. Tammy and I went down and talked to Mike Inman and he told us that they were private roads. And then, if you look on any of the like pedestrians or the ACIS or something, it states on there that they're private roads. They are not maintained by county, they are not maintained by anybody except for the property owners. We have always maintained our roads. We pay for the gravel for them, we plow them. And one of the ones that plow our road, they're not, they're not owned by the county, they're not owned by the city, they're owned by us residents. So where does it state that you can annex private roads?
So when the county accepted the subdivision, the roads became county roads. When the county asked the city.
They haven't been county roads. They've never been county roads.
Speak up here for a minute.
I understand your position, Bill, but this is, the county accepted those roads into the system. I know you're maintaining them and a lot of property owners do, even where they are.
But they've never been county roads. When did they become county roads?
When the county accepted the subdivision.
Which was when?
I would have to go back and look.
They haven't been, they haven't been county roads for the last year. A year ago, they were in county. So within this last year, if the county accepted them, I would like to know when and how.
And why weren't we?
Yeah, why weren't we notified?
There are some things that you will get notified about because the law requires that you get notified. And there are other things that are simply going to be part of the public notice, whether it's in the city commission agenda or the county commission agenda.
But when it comes to our private property, which included our roads, we should be notified of anything like that. They've never been county. We don't get, I mean, nobody has ever taken care of any of our roads. They maintain Garnier, but they've never maintained to the right or left of Garnier, ever.
I haven't looked to see if there's, they're particularly set out as classified roads or some other class. But certainly, the county, when the county asked us to annex those roads at our request, the county believed that they were county roads and so did we. I don't have any reason to believe that they're not.
But they're the ones that told us they were private. So how could they believe that they were county?
I don't, I understand that you're saying you got that information from Mr. Inman. I have not looked at the road book, I don't know if Mr. Inman looks at the road book, but.
He did when we were down there. He showed us.
They may be a private road on a public.
It's, there is no public easement, though.
So we can double check on that, but that was, that's not the issue for tonight.
But if that's what you're using the wholly surrounded for, if you're using.
Then it's challengeable one day. If that was wrong, then it's challengeable.
It is challengeable, yes. And that's why I'm asking.
But first we have to determine that was wrong, which isn't the issue tonight. Tonight's a different issue.
But you're trying to use wholly surrounded. If we're using contiguous, then that means we had thirty-eight property owners that we actually got a hold of. Can I speak, please? Thank you.
Actually, your time is up.
Actually, it's not, because I haven't been talking this whole time. So if you're using that wholly surrounded, it is an issue because that is what you're trying. If you're going with contiguous land or contiguous MCA, then we have a right to fight that. And then you cannot try to annex us for another year.
You absolutely have the right to fight.
Thank you. Next, no public comment, go ahead.
You are.
Oh. Thank you, Matthew.
So having looked at the flat, when the area was originally plotted, all the roads were dedicated to the public. It doesn't necessarily mean that the public is maintained or currently publicly maintained because subdivision didn't really develop the way that it was plotted. But those roads are shown as being dedicated to the public. It also doesn't mean the county roads, but they are roads that have been dedicated to the public on subdivision flat that was approved by the county.
When was that?
I don't know the date that that flat was approved, but it wasn't that recent.
Did you find that out?
I don't have the plot right here anymore.
Where would we go to find that?
The county clerk. Uh, the county clerk and recorder's office will have all recorded flats that have been approved in the, in our system.
And for those of you looking, four dot three is where you can find the livestock. You can see right there, it says prohibited unless you receive a permit from the sanitary. So that, that's where you can keep the livestock.
And just real quick about some of the elderly neighbors, and I understand that that's a real concern to some people.
A lot.
And it is one of those things that we visited with a number of people about Green Acres after that annexation.
And a lot of them ended up selling a movie.
You absolutely did. But a lot of them also took advantage of the tax relief that's available through the state and, and stayed in their homes if they wanted to because the, the, particularly for single folks on fixed income, a lot of them were able to get a great deal of tax relief. And they're paying less taxes now than they were prior to the annexation.
But then they have all like the, the sea water, the sea sewer, um, which is like, it totals like a hundred dollars a month.
We're pretty happy to take this floor. Thank you. Go ahead.
Amber Stringgoff, two-nineteen Garnier, number sixteen, Frenchier Mobile Home Park. How will my taxes change?
So do you, do you own the trailer?
Yes.
So that tax, I think, will change neighbors' views at all. Uh, because that's considered a property tax, but it's specific to mobile homes. So there won't be any significant increase on that. Do you own the land under the trailer?
No, I do not.
Then that would be, there's really no change to your taxes.
Okay. And secondly, um, water, sewer, garbage, how will that would affect us?
So there's a requirement for garbage for all residents. So you would need a garbage can. Um, it's sixteen dollars a month. Uh, it's picked up twice a week.
Okay.
So that's garbage. Water and sewer won't affect you for quite a while until, until and if you hook up to the system. Um, so there's been no decision for decision on how that will work. We will put sewer bins in. At that point, it will probably be an SIB, or a special improvement district. But that is taxed on the property. And so if you don't own any of the property, you wouldn't be taxed upon that specifically.
Um, I just want to make a personal statement, if that's okay with you. We do have a lot of senior, um, a great deal of disabled, multi-generational homes. And one of my concerns is the lot rent goes up because the taxes fill up on my landlord. Then there is an increase for me monthly because I'll have my taxes. Then I will also have to do garbage. Then when it comes to the point, if the vacant owner doesn't sell and leave all of us homeless, um, it's the monthly water and sewer bills. And just please take, take into consideration that it's this huge financial impact for every single mobile home in the park. And I don't know how a lot of people are going to manage that or even if they can. And just please consider that. Come out and look at the areas if you have not. It's really all I'm asking, just to consider that. Because it puts a lot of people who are already vulnerable in a different time or difficult time in the world with COVID, jobs, childcare. Everybody is struggling with that right now. And then the thought of us having to be homeless too, that the financial, mental, the emotional impact that it's going to make on just that community of one is tremendous. So please take the time to consider that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tim Schwartz. Tim Schwartz, please. Can I ask this question? Uh, well, the first thing is sometimes it's a little hard to hear. I really want to hear what people have to say. It was hard for me to hear someone said, Amber, I'm sorry, because there's some chatter. The acoustics in this room are really terrible. So if you don't mind just waiting till you're at the podium to speak, it would be a lot easier for the commissioners to hear everybody. I would really appreciate that.
Thank you. You want to close something?
I know, and so it's really, it's one ear, yeah, it's two different inputs. The other thing I was hoping, because this is, I appreciate everything Amber said. It's not new to us. We've heard this and we've been working, uh, the city's been working with previously annexed neighborhoods. Could we share some of the solutions that the city's been working towards to help recently annexed neighborhoods overcome some of these challenges?
Might be a good idea to answer some questions for you, you know, folks, the questions that I'm sure people in the audience has and may speed things up again. So now that you've done it, I'm answering the same questions over and over. Mr. Carter, do you trust that?
Sure. So Green Acres is probably the best example because that's the one we've been farthest along in the process. Obviously, Green Acres was already on city water, so they were a little different in that aspect. They were already paying city water. That's not new to them. They've been paying that since nineteen fifty-one or something. They again are not paying sewer because they're not on sewer yet. A sewer project is a multi-year project that will take, uh, we probably won't even start that for another year or two. Uh, so, but in the meantime, we have applied for multiple grants for Green Acres to help defray the costs of that sewer. I think right now, one, two, maybe we have one.
One now and one on the agenda for the evening.
Yeah. So we have one that we've already asked for and one on the agenda for this evening to ask for additional money to, to defray some of that cost for the homeownership. And they're not, they're not paying the entire cost of a sewer upgrade. And they aren't anyway because the city took some portions of Green Acres Park and some other areas and city's paying for those portions of this square footage of the area. So we did that upfront as well. Uh, there might be something similar in this area of the Sackett Park, uh, depending on the square footage of that. We'll probably set that up instead. So that's how the city is attempting to defray some of the costs from the special improvement district. The, and then some of the advantages they're getting is, uh, we are doing some upgrades to Green Acres Park, which hopefully will help you as well in the area. Uh, we're looking, when the sewer goes in, we'll put bathrooms into Green Acres Park. Uh, we're looking to get Ziggo in and doing some of the maintenance and, uh, if there's some playground equipment that they're asking for with the parks and trails community currently. Uh, so those are just some of the tangible benefits that they'll see from joining the, uh, we're joining the city as well. Additional controls, um, the partners have added that area to their, their general controls. The, I mean, the garbage is the garbage. There's really nothing there at sixteen dollars a month. Uh, you do get pickups, you don't have to haul anymore, which may or may not be beneficial to you, depending on who you are. But certainly for some of the elderly neighbors, that might be helpful. Uh, they won't have to haul garbage or, you won't have to haul for... And those are probably the main items that we, we're working with Green Acres to approve right now. And we're, some of the same, same other items. I know some of the Green Acres residents were particularly happy with the fact that, uh, people couldn't set out fireworks in the park anymore. Uh, before that, that was, we've seen a couple of calls in that, so that was nice.
Can you answer what the extent of the progress and the taxes were of the normal house, what the change was on that?
So, we can't entertain comments from the floor. I'm willing to come up and speak at the podium and trust it at that time. Done, Michael.
The only other thing I was thinking is, city staff has been doing some different public outreach with the community during the transition to, yeah?
Yeah, there've been many meetings between public works and the, the residents to, to look at alignment of the sewer, timing and some of those grants that we've tried.
Thank you.
Jay O'Dell, one-oh-two Loma Lane. I'm pretty sure this is the same parcel you guys are talking about, but I've never heard you mention that. I am the neighboring property of my four hundred new neighbors that was supposedly granted some grants for low income. And I'm worried like the rent there is like seventeen hundred dollars are asking for. That's not low income. I have water line coming for, for the old Green Acres through my property and everything. I didn't build on one side because the water line was there for the city. And if I broke into it, I wouldn't have, I couldn't afford it all because it's all asbestos line. And I'm zoned commercial. Will I still be zoned commercial when all this shit goes down?
So I'd have to look at where your property is, but I don't think we're into anything on Loma Lane.
Loma Lane?
Yeah, so Loma Lane's not...
So I'm still a donor?
You will still be outside the city.
Okay, I was told I'd be annexed here. Because I'm just south of, south of the, uh,
South of the...
Where it's called that new four hundred B D.
That's not part of the annexation. And I would say that asbestos pipe that you're having trouble with wasn't actually a city pipe. That was put in to provide water.
I know, but if I would have got into it, it would have...
Right.
But you guys are still supplying that, aren't you? Isn't, is water still coming through that?
The long-term plan is actually to abandon that in place, at which point you can do anything with it because of the shut-off.
So, but it's not yet.
Not yet. That's probably with these improvements would be one of the things that would happen to me. But those are future plans that we have.
Because I can't afford any more taxes than I already taxed. It's outrageous. Thank you, Jay. Be back next year when you try to take it.
I have rental properties in the city, but not in any of the...
Could you, could you put that mic down so we can hear back here?
Is that better? And I'm just worried that, uh, what's it going to do to all of the properties that we have in the city of Livingston that you guys are, you don't maintain a whole lot of stuff? And you're adding more and more and more. What's it going to cost us as our taxes throughout Livingston go up? Along with that, um, do I sell all of our rental properties now and get out of the mess before we end up with a mess? Because we're already having to raise our rates due to the taxes, the extra fees for the water, sewer, garbage, especially since we can't separate the stuff on our duplex properties unless we have a whole new line put in, when we can do what's before. And so we can't have our renters pay those. So then we're stuck with that. So then I raise my rent and I end up getting the ass because of all of this. So I just want to know how and when this is all going to affect us.
I'll take that one. You guess, um, sounds like you have some complex issues. I don't know. You have a duplex in the city and you don't have separate water lines. Each unit, that doesn't, that's not towed in as far as I, I know and stuff like that. So probably something I was grandfathered in, but, um, that's all I can trust for that situation. Carter's?
Uh, in general, you probably want to see any initial change to your taxes based on the annexation. They pay their own sewer water rates if on the system, so they recover that. If there's any significant improvement, such as a water or sewer system, that's an SIB for that neighborhood, they recover most of the costs of that. So they really not a significant effect on taxes in the city other than you're sharing the cost of road maintenance with more people. So you might actually see a decrease in street maintenance cost.
But you don't already, you don't maintain the streets that are already here and then you're going to add more to it.
Yes.
Uh, so is the question, is it about your taxes?
But how are we going to take on more work with, you know, with what you don't already do? With the taxes we pay?
So the streets that will be annexed are already on the way to the other streets of the city. So there's not going to be significant change in labor to get half towns streets that are already there. I mean, it's, it's, the maintenance is the maintenance. I mean, unless we want more taxes, then I can hire more people to maintain the road.
Yeah.
That's the error.
Well, I mean, that kind of pushes me in a direction that I kind of might not want rentals anymore, so there's thirteen.
And those are in the city, right?
Yeah.
Thank you. Any other comments?
My name is Jody Gaines and I live in Fort Henry, Miles, directly across from the Brookstone, low-income housing. So kind of to Kissy's point, we're going to be adding all these other streets and you just said, oh, they're going to add a park and they're going to put the, or the restroom in a park and more playground equipment and blah blah. Wasn't it maintaining that? Who's going to pay those people to maintain that? We can't, we don't even, people don't maintain our streets well enough right now, other than the bus racks. So where does that money come from, other than taxes?
Uh, I mean, you're absolutely right. All, all the money this city spends comes from taxes. That's your taxing order.
So how do we add more bathrooms in a park? And more maintenance for the city without helping people? Without paying them, without raising taxes?
Well, certainly we pay everybody enough.
Well, exactly. Whose money does that come from? Where does that come from?
All the money comes from taxes.
Yeah. And you can't grant money all of that off, right?
You can't. Well, it depends what you get for grants, but yes, you can sometimes. Especially parks and trails, you can get parks grants. In fact, most of the trails that we, we've built lately have been with grant money. So yes, you can. As far as that goes, there is a parks and trails budget that's been the same as it's been for many years and we look at that every year. That's where that money will come from. Uh, so the, like last year, I think it was last year, we put, uh, new restrooms out at Myers River View Trail.
Property proposing, you want to use them?
So we would use the same source of money to put in bathrooms anywhere else. When we do improvements, it comes from the same budget, same, same tax rate.
You know, I'm, I'm very lucky because we own a couple of lots and we don't have a lot of neighbors. That's why we live where we live. That's why we bought where we bought, because it's county. And, you know, look at a lot of the neighbors around me who are going to be displaced, especially the trailhead park. You displace those people out of those that. And you have supposed of low-income housing across the street. It's, it's really sad. Like, I lied to me, like some of these ladies said, please take a hard look at that. What are you going to do to families and force people out of this community? People who have lived here, some of us, our whole lives, weren't bred here, and you're going to force them out of this community. So just think long and hard about that before you make the decision, please.
Thank you. I also might add that, that trailer park question, they have to boil the water in springtime a lot of times too. So we're looking at improving that, making quality life better out there.
When was that?
They do it every spring.
What did you say?
I really want to know why you want to annex us. Because what you're proposing is actually going to change the entire face of our neighborhood. All of us have two to three lots by grand you. And most people on the sides and everything, two to three lots. I've heard that we will have to have two to three hookups for water and sewer because we have those lots, which means that we have to pay double or triple for the hookups. Then on top of it, you want to change the zoning at the end of the road, which we came together with the county to find that precise zoning. So we would not have two houses per lot because it changes the face of our neighborhood. All of a sudden, instead of our kids being able to ride bikes and walk their dogs up and down the roads, we have cars for, what, there's like twenty-eight or so lots over there? That means that's fifty-six additional families and vehicles going up and down our roads. We maintain those roads and you say, oh, yeah, we'll take care of them. We haven't seen anybody out there. I've lived there for over twenty years. And you want to change the face of our neighborhood? You want to change what we're doing and how we're living and why we moved there? And you keep telling us, oh, well, we're going to help improve it. Well, it's not an improvement, not in our eyes. And yes, we need more... And yes, we need more housing, I understand. I know people are struggling right now. But there are people who are gonna lose their homes because they cannot afford to stay there, pay more taxes, pay additional hookups, have more maintenance, and then you wanna widen grand view to make it sixty feet wide. So we lose all of our parking and we start getting tickets because we're parking in front of our houses, which has happened in the city, in the town of Livingston. I have neighbors who have complained about this. You want to annex us, I want to know why. Is it for the taxes? We're not surrounded all the way. You say we're wholly surrounded, we're only surrounded on two sides. We have Yellowstone River on one side and to the north, there is no City of Livingston. It's open. And that could change in the future, but right now, none of us wants to do it. Because you are going to change our way of life and that is not fair. Thank you all.
Since I can't congratulate my wife on the floor, I'm gonna do it here. Congratulations, that's top.
Thank you.
Malcolm Fowler, 211 Grandview Boulevard.
Thank you.
I'm not as up on all the laws and all the ordinances, but I don't trust you guys. I think a lot of us feel like if we give an inch, you're gonna take a mile. And we're not Nazi Germany right now, buddy. And I don't, I don't want you to annex me.
Let's, let's not.
So if I don't have any rights?
Order.
Then what's the difference?
Hey, whoa, whoa, whoa. Let's not address anybody personally.
You're addressing me personally in my house. It does get more personal.
You're out of order.
Of course. I wanna be in my house where I can be.
You're out of order, sit down.
Sure.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
At this time, I'm gonna say, um, I'm not gonna tolerate any more of that. Um, you will be asked to leave, be escorted up. Um, we're here in good faith and we're here reasonably talking. Um, I know it's emotional for everybody, but we have to keep those in check. Or we're not gonna get anything done. It's gonna be a long meeting and want everybody to have the opportunity to talk. At some point, I will have to amend it and limit, um, comments to two minutes perhaps. Um, I don't wanna do that. I wanna keep it going, but I wanna keep it fluid, but I want to keep it respectful also. And we'll not be tolerated, so thank you. That's, uh, public comment.
Hi, Jackie Feigle, 166 Miller Drive. I am not in the area that's being spoken for right now. But I want to stand with my county residents and let them know that I am backing them and I fully support what they're saying. And with all of this negative, I was wondering if you guys have any positives from people or a majority of people that would like this to happen? Um, because from all the thing that I've heard, these people do not wish to be in the city and in a different tax bracket. And it's, it's just gonna be completely about the money. Sorry, but that's what I feel like it's going to be. And all of these people who would like to retire and still live in their house and still live in the county because, let's face it, taxes are way higher than the county. Um, if they plan to retire in two years when they get annexed and their taxes go up, they can't retire, they have to keep working. And that's just really sad to me. That people can't retire and live out their lives the way that they want to and the way that they bought their housing in the county and now they're gonna be in the city where it's just gonna be not a good idea. I feel like maybe we'll get more rooms filled up like this, um, when more things come up. But do you really want all these people coming in and being upset about them being in the city home? So that's all I have to say about this county land that should stay county land. Thank you.
I want to go on the record saying that I have not seen, seen one email or phone call to be heard of this resolution, I don't know if my other commissioners have or not, but I, as a person, as a city commissioner, I'm just letting you know that. And I can't take public comment from the public place. Unless you're with me or yourself, you can tell somebody else to ask a question.
My name's Jack Swanson. I live at 262 James Road, which isn't right in this area. Well, I have a few questions for you guys. Number one, Willie Nellie, you go around and you annex county roads and the city streets. Okay, fine, county doesn't want to fix them, you guys haven't got any money to fix them. So you keep buying and getting more. So then you encircle a piece of property and the next thing you know, that poor brother's annexed. For what? More tax dollars. And I just wondered what your end game is? How far you're gonna keep going and going and going? And did anybody out there where you're annexing now come to the city and say, hey, I wanna be annexed into the city? How many of them did that? Now, I don't know if that's ludicrous questions, but as a taxpayer, you guys are wasting more money than you can bring in. So you gotta keep trying to jack the taxes on somebody else. So what's your end game? That's the answer I want. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to partially answer that question. There, there is no official end game. I took it quite personally when, uh, the question of trust comes up. I take it personally when personal attacks come up. The end game is annexing areas that should have been, in some cases, annexed decades ago. So what's happening is the program is being brought up to speed. There is no end game. I don't get a damn more dime if anybody gets annexed. There is more money that comes in and it isn't wasted. The cost, the cost of the operations in Livingston, the, the cost of water in Livingston is way below the state average. So the, the fact that this is the area of how I feel is how things go. This is the era of that. It's not the rule of law, it's not the rule of what the, uh, what the state code is. If the state code says whatever, whatever it says, that's the way you go. And whatever it is, that should be followed. I don't have a bit of problem with that. It should be, it should be, uh, discussed and whatever is the reality of it, uh, is the way things should be decided. A lot of field, I almost have to laugh, I pay, I have a house in the city and there's two of us. And I pay roughly seventy dollars a month for utilities, garbage, whatever. You know, we're not talking a hundred dollars here. So, you know, I, I'd like just a perspective of reality given to all of this as a perspective of following the code. I don't have a problem with that. That's the way it should work.
We all do.
Say again?
We all do, we have a problem with that.
Following the code?
Hey, then, comments, comments.
I'm sorry, I didn't, I'm not gonna, I shouldn't have answered that, I apologize.
Thank you.
But, uh, when you're talking about anybody making any kind of end game or whatever, it's just to bring things up to speed in the city, which has been neglected for quite some time. Thank you.
Patricia Gray, 0204 East Callender Street. I'd like to bring a point of order, but it is public comment, it is just public comment. No response to public comment, just courtesy to the way the law is written.
It's mortifying, thank you.
At, at first, I was also gonna ask a question before I make a comment about this, which is, what is finally our stimulus money from the last round of stimulus money we received?
That's not applicable at this time.
But it's just public comment.
That has nothing to do with, um, resident.
Okay, okay. Okay. There's fifty percent of this body right now may or may not, well, certainly be in office in the next two months. And one of the characteristics of this particular commission has been a reputation of not listening to what people say. And I think it would be an opportunity for this commission and for the people leaving office to really listen to what people are saying. And, and answering the question, why are they doing this? I have heard comments, for example, on why this is happening because the septic systems are close to the Yellowstone River. We don't want them polluting the Yellowstone River, it's a rationale, for example, for this. There really is no reason to annex this property in a representative democracy because the people here do not want it. And almost all annexations are supposed to be citizen-initiated. This is not a citizen-initiated annexation. So giving to the public this wonderful thing of representative democracy, listening to what people are saying and really taking it in and understanding and liking them for, for their positions is, would just behoove this, um, in, in some ways, a lame duck, uh, commission. It would be a legacy that you would leave the people of Livingston with, which is, in this particular case, the people didn't initiate it, they don't want it, and there is no reason to do it. So please consider listening to the, what the people are saying this time, this time before you leave office. It would be so appreciated by the people here. They're not personally upset with you, or, or with Clinton. They just wanna be heard. They want, they want their homes, you to consider what's happening to their homes, to their neighborhoods, to their lives. And they're just asking that courteously, really. So please consider this as an opportunity this time for this outgoing commission to actually really listen to what people are saying. Thanks so much.
My name is Angela Cruzmark and I own property, rented property in the Frencher Trailer Court. All I would like to say is that, Mr. Maybe, I congratulate you on your seventy-eight dollar water bill. I just paid one for my mom on South High Street and was two hundred and thirty-five dollars for one month. I don't want annexation. If I am forced to swallow it, I will sell my property and not, no longer have rental property for low-income people. I try to keep my rent under a thousand dollars a month for my families. And if you include us in this annexation, I will be forced to sell and no longer be able to provide that to my people. So please take that into consideration, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Heidi Feldman, 407 Arbor Drive. I am not going to be in this current annexation at this time. However, um, I have some friends that is, was going to regard to and considering the events were close also, so I decided to help out with getting petitions started. Um, with the great help of Jolynn. And, you know, I knock on doors and you wouldn't believe how great of neighbors I am. I'm so thankful right now. But, and to know that so many of them are struggling with this choice of whether they're gonna stay or not. And honestly, it might end up being more for me too because we thought we found our forever moment if we end up being annexed also, which I know it's down the road, but it's probably coming. We might also end up with that too. I did wanna ask one more thing, I know everybody's asking this. But why, why are you doing that? Is it just, um, just absorption, just absorbing the land, those plans? That's what we thought of? I mean, has it been in the plans for a while? Was this recent? I guess that's one of my main questions, first off.
Go ahead and continue on that.
Well, and I know that.
Because I want you to have your fort next to the speed.
Um, you know, a while back, I knew when you annexed the streets, we were on Zoom and I had asked about annexing the streets and I said, well, what about the land? And at that time, of course, they said, no, we're not annexing the land, don't worry about it. That was pretty dead by that time. And I just wanted to mention that also. That was during COVID, it was during Zoom, I don't have the data. Um, also, I did want to regard that email that, um, Jolynn and I worked together. She said she emailed all of the commissioners on August twenty-third at one seventeen P M. So do you check your emails? Because that was sent to you guys about that. Um, you know, another neighbor that also has an orchard, she was talking about, she didn't know what she was gonna do if that was tied into water. She's gonna lose her orchard. Just please get to know some of these neighbors, they're awesome. And I want you to know that their lives are in areas. Okay? They, they really are. And what their future is. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
My name is Gilman, I own the Frencher Trailer Court. Did I hear you right that you said that I grow my water in a trailer court? Did I hear you right on that?
If I'm, if I'm thinking of the same place Mr. Curtis, then perhaps I have to. Definitely, we've had high waters on.
I, I do not grow my water. I have to have a monthly check on my water. And every so often, I have to take about two dozen tests for different things and my water will be max perfectly safe for at least three years. And you know, I raised some of that to match that is because the egg got tested after the time period and I had to take another test for two. And I am against the annexing because my trailer court is a low-income cat property for, and most everyone there is unsociable and anybody that knows how, how it is fully unsociable. So I'm against, yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Byron Kober, I live at Leighton Boulevard Drive, Livingston, on the Panhandle. Several meetings ago, I asked Courtney Llewellyn twice, two different meetings, to answer a question and you guys have refused to answer the question. I said, what happens when you annex these streets? You're gonna be forcing these people into, into the annexation. And you refused to say, instead of the time, well, you're not gonna be doing it. That was just a couple of months ago. You said, we won't be doing that right now. Now you're back here making these people go through the same thing, which you said just a few months ago, you would not be doing. I'm saying, when is your word ever gonna be good? Because it's not. When you tell people one thing, you know. When you tell people one thing, a few months later, you do something different. I tried to get my questions answered, and this loose, loose. You muted me. You refused to let me talk on the beat. You muted me all day.
Not a trust her, you're trusting the chair is the one that muted you, not Mr. Newt.
So you did?
No. Correll Hogan was the chair at the time. And I would have muted you too at that time for not following protocol.
Protocol was asking questions, saying, what's going on?
I'm the man who you were at that time, but that's, that's in the past. That was in the past.
My point is, when is your word going to ever be good enough to people here? When you tell them one time you're not going to be doing it, you say we're going to annex these streets in. I went and asked city manager, I said, you guys don't maintain the streets you have now. I said, you look at all the new streets you put in, or the streets you have in, you have manholes that never have the street height. I said, you never take care of them, you don't give them the right height. You put brand-new streets in down Main Street or B Street, and you can't even get the manholes to the correct height of the street. And I said, you don't ever take care of them. I said, you could take care of spend money on that, and you want to spend money on something that would suit people all over time? And his response was, I don't know where any of them are at. I said, have you ever driven to either street, or any of the streets, different ones back and forth? There's streets all over, and I said, the manholes don't even match the street. You go over the main streets, you do different things, you never take care of things. How are you going to maintain these new streets for these people that you want to put in now? You say you don't have the money, so you raise taxes. When you go raise the taxes, it affects everybody. And I presented a petition, which is not on the agenda right now, for sixty-five people owners for the new, the planning that's going on. And said, we do not want to be in the city also. So I think by state law, it says you have to, if it's under three-hundred people, you have to go, and the petition cannot be annexed by the city. You cannot do it by state law. And you break in state law by doing that.
Thank you, Myron.
Joshua Powell, two-zero-six, Grandin Boulevard. My husband and I are longtime residents of Livingston. We've had the opportunity to buy this property from the owner that no longer lives here. And we're basically doing each other a favor for him to move on with his new endeavors in his life and for us to build our family. We have a two and a seven-year-old, and we want them to grow up in Livingston. The more bills that get tacked on monthly for us, the less likely we can stay here. We struggle as it is with my husband living at the mine and trying to do profitable mechanic work on the side. And if we get annexed, will we take it daily for all the vehicles that we have in our front yard? Because some of them do not run. And that's just additional money that we don't have. And we don't want the fear of having to find another home yet again. We have to move three times a year due to us being pushed out for a homeowner selling here in the city. Both our families have been here for generations, from Garnier to Livingston. And we'd like to just continue to build our family here. Thanks.
Thank you.
Heidi Smith, one-fifteen, All Spa. I was wondering, can you kind of all-part figure how much our property's taxes will go up?
Mr. Curtis? So city taxes will vary greatly depending on how much property you have. Larger properties, and that mainly is a portion of the street maintenance district, which is taxed by the square foot. So if you leave out the squared, if you leave out the street maintenance district, city taxes, I think, are slightly less than county taxes, or really close. The difference is, the county doesn't stop charging taxes when you're in the city, so you've been both city and county taxes. But they're usually pretty similar, they've been a couple hundred dollars with each other. For the average, for the average city resident, the city taxes make up about forty-two percent of their total tax bill, and the rest of it is county and school.
But then on top of all that, then you have the SIBs.
If there was a sewer, once the sewer system was put in, then there would be SIBs.
I remember, you know, before, when you annexed, first looking at annexing and bringing acres, you know, you got together with that area to discuss everything, kind of had a pulse with them. Why wasn't that done for Montague or the issue? The area that you were addressing?
I think Green Acres was really the first annexation that we did. We are still continuing to have meetings with them. And really, the most productive meetings have been post-annexation. And so we realized that that's probably the time to have meetings.
Post, rather than pre?
If it's pre, you don't actually get to talk about issues. We'll talk about issues that we're talking about together, whether it's legal or state law, whether the river constitutes a boundary. We didn't really have very productive conversations prior to annexation, before annexation happened. And so that's kind of what we've shaped forward.
I live in the Montague Homeowners Association Block Seven. And we're pretty much self-sufficient. We have one well for the beginning homes, and we all have our own septic. There's no room for us to grow in our block. So, you know, and the neighbor next to me just put in a brand-new septic system, built a brand-new house that he hasn't even got to utilize yet. You know, so I guess I would like to see more information. I know you had to talk to Green Acres, and even before you annexed it in, you know, you presented them with how much their property taxes would be going up. As a single homeowner that works for the county, I'm on a pretty tight budget. I would hate to think that I would have to retire just to be able to qualify for lower taxes from the Department of Realty. But that is what I would be forced to do. Either that, or I would have to actually sell my home. And so I am opposed to this at this time.
Thank you.
Yeah, sure. So, a couple of the water sewer issues, just so we're all on the same page. When we do a project like this, you're not actually required, unless the commission makes a different decision later, you're not required to hook up to the water and sewer. So when we're talking the different parcels, we're talking stub. So we're just running things from the vein to the edge of the property. You're not required to hook up to that immediately. So if you have a good well, and you have a good septic, you can maintain those for as long as they're working properly. Once they fail, then you would be required to hook up to sewer at that point.
But isn't it always cheaper for you to hook up as you go by? Don't you pay less of a fee then when you wait?
No, because that's what the stubs will be. So the stubs will run all the way to the edge of your property. And then once they're there, you just have a sewer, or have a plumber do that work whenever you want. So you won't necessarily get a bill immediately. So someone was talking about orchards earlier. I assume they have a well. They can still use, irrigation wells inside the city are perfectly fine. If you're using that for your house water, you can continue to use it for your house water until a well fails, in which case you can hook up to the city. And at that point, it's going to be cheaper to hook up to it. Well, now we know that the DQ. I doubt anyone, if you have two or three lots, you can probably put a DQ conforming septic tank in. But if you don't, I think those are running twenty thousand plus right now to put a non-conforming septic tank in. So that would be, so it's not that you will have a sewer and water bill immediately once you're annexed or once the project's done. It'd only be once you hooked up. And so if you have, if you're someone that's built a brand-new septic, that can be used for probably come out of time before you have to hook up to the city.
Some of the issues with Green Acres also lose some density there as well. If the septic system fails, a lot of those properties, DQ is not going to, it's not going to pass most of the DQ. Basically have more of those properties. Thank you.
One up shore, five-one-nine Garnier. So I'm the guy with the new septic. So if that septic lasts twenty, thirty years, I won't be required to have to do it.
So there is a city code that the commission could vote to force you to. I don't think that's on the agenda right now. But no, if it lasts one or thirty years, there are a lot of septic problems. We're not forcing Green Acres to hook up the sewer. We're not forcing Green Acres to hook up the water. They were already hooked up to water.
So the SIBs will bring sewer down the street, the alley?
They'll bring the sewer mains, and the design will be determined later exactly where we put the mains. It would bring the mains to the property, and then stub the mains from the middle of the road, wherever that happens to be too.
It'll be the street, not the alley.
Well, it might be the alley. It would just depend on where the engineers say the septic is. In general, and this is just general, it's different than every neighborhood. But in general, we try to put sewer and water in the street.
Because I assume most alleys, most of the septic's might subdivision or is the alley?
Yes, and that would, so if that's the case, and that's what the engineers will look at. Green Acres is much more difficult because they don't have any alleys. So we have to figure out how to get that sewer to that vein, and where the mains would be most likely to be located. But if the main's going to alley, then yes, they would. They would put the sewer main in the alley, stub it to the property line, and then when it was time to hook up, then they just, you just need a plumber to open the alley.
So if I was to tie in your septic and water to it, what would it cost?
The tying in part?
The impact fee, tying in the case.
We haven't discussed the impact fees yet, and one of the things we're looking at is whether the impact fees towards these areas that you're saying. It depends, those are, that'll depend a lot on the conditions when it goes in. But some of the impact fees will probably cover the SIBs.
Well, I sat with this man one day, and got an answer from another friend of yours. It was like thirty-five hundred for one, forty-five hundred for another, so it's great grand.
Those are the standard fees, but we're not necessarily going to charge this type of fees.
Okay, so we also be required to put sidewalks around the properties, even in the city?
It's not a requirement. There are a lot of neighborhoods in the city that don't have sidewalks. But it could be a requirement that the commission's not charged.
So lots of expense, sidewalks.
You probably aren't going to put a sidewalk in independent of an entirely new road, but it just depends on.
Putting excavator plumber, I'm a plumber. I'm not chief.
True.
We're talking a lot of them.
Thank you, Bob.
My name is John Scott White. I've lived here sixty-two years. I own property in the city and properties in the county. I have property at three-oh-eight Garnier. I purchased it because it was in the county. And I can appreciate change. I know it happens whether you like it or not. But as a taxpayer, it's my understanding you folks are elected to represent the people and the will of the people. I did not reach out to anyone here because I signed a petition that has been filed with the court, and I did send a personal letter to the court that reflected my dislike and lack of desire for you folks to annex my property into the city. I looked through everything that you sent me. I sought legal counsel. I reached out for opinions that were not city-related. I asked them, what is the benefit through this action for me, the taxpayer, that owns whole four properties? They all said absolutely no benefit, zero. So I stand here wondering, why would you pass something when I know that more than half of the people impacted by this are against it? I was unable to speak with everybody. You've been petitioned. You've received letters. You're supposed to represent the will of the people, your taxpayers, me, us. Why don't you do it? Why are we the victims of something that gives us no fiscal benefit? I'm completely satisfied with the county. Thrilled that my property is in the county and have had a very positive relationship with the county with regards to this particular property that I own there. I do own rental properties in the city. I witnessed my water sewer trash bill go from twenty, thirty dollars a month to now a hundred, twenty-five, hundred thirty, provided we don't generate too much trash, which I'm always on my tenets because I too try and keep my rents low. I respect that people work hard for their money. And not everyone is as blessed and privileged as we are fiscally. And I like helping others. And I hope you guys will do the same. If this passes, you're making a grave mistake. I hope you will listen to me, and I hope you will listen to everybody who's spoken here. And I hope you'll read the petition. Thank you.
Well, my name is Kenny Hopson, and I live at two-twelve Grandin Boulevard. And I have lived there for twenty-one years. I lived there, actually, I went and stood out. Sorry, I'm emotional. I went and stood out there, and I picked where I wanted my house. I wanted to live in the county, not in the city. And when I moved there, the land behind me was county. And never in my life did I think, in twenty-one years, I would be being annexed into the city. I do not want to live in the city. I don't want to have my neighbor's dog go to doggy jail when it comes to say hello. I don't want my neighbor's cat to go to cat jail when it comes over to eat my cigar first. I want our community to stay the same. I have someone say, well, we can get things enforced that we don't like. I like everything about where I live, except the fact that the city's right in there. I would have never put my house there if I would have realized that this is what was going to happen. I grew up in the county, I lived in Leslie's old house. My children were born in her house. I chose to live in the county, not the city. Well, one who buy my property from me so that I can move further away and afford to live. My husband had an accident at work over a year and a half ago. He hasn't worked. And it is very hard to make it. And I just want to say, I talked to Mr. Curtis after one of the Green Acres meetings, and I said, well, you wouldn't want to annex us. I mean, we don't have city water or sewer. And he said, how much property do you have? And I said, well, some have two county lots, some have three. He said, you can subdivide that, right? And I said, no. He goes, I know you don't want to, but you could if you had to. And I said, no, our houses are right in the middle of it. How could we ever subdivide? And he said, they were plotted for the size that they are. They are not three individual lots, they are one. And he said, no, we wouldn't want to. That would be weird, is annexing a five-acre tract. How would you ever know how many sewer drops are good for all of your property sizes being different? And I now hear that you guys are traveling out that way. I, we never, none of us ever wanted this. I can guarantee you that if one person even called and said, will you please annex us into the city? I'd like to know who they are. Because we spoke to pretty much everyone in our neighborhood, and not one person ever said in one of us. And I have a map from today that I printed off, and it says Arbor Drive is in the county. It's not the city. And that means we're not fully surrounded, so it should go to a vote. And fifty-one percent of you guys, we mean it doesn't pass. So as a citizen of our community and everybody else, I think it should go to a vote to the citizens. And I appreciate it. I'm sorry for being emotional, but the fact is, people pick where they live for a reason. I didn't just stumble over and go, oh, my goodness, I should just take this one. I stood out in the middle of an empty pond and pit where I wanted my house. I don't want to be in the city. I want my grandkids, I want this lady's kids, that lady's kids out riding their bikes up and down the street. I don't want to have city streets, I don't want to have city water. I can't stand city water, as a matter of fact. I don't want any of it. And I think that you should really take time to listen to all of us. Because we aren't coming into your home and taking it away from you. Because we aren't coming into your home and taking it away from you.
Thank you.
Can I have a minute of recess? Generally, what I try to do at 7:00, 7:00 hour and a half, so. We'll return at 7:10. Thank you.